Work session to order, there we are. So, second item of business is the minutes approval.
I'll move to approve.
Any further discussion? Minutes of the March meeting, okay, we have a motion to approve and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No tabled applications, right? All right, so then let's go through tonight's and see if we have any questions for clarification. Okay, so the first one is a request for a use variance, and that's the issue we're going to be considering tonight. Other issues that may be brought up, but we'll deal with them as they occur. Anybody have any questions on this for clarification or purpose or anything like that? No? All right, number two, restaurant, pretty clear. Three, is that the one you guys were talking about with the statute that...
Yeah.
Okay. That was a good question. Any other questions on three?
What was your question?
No, mine was, mine was on number one.
Number one, that's what I thought.
Is there, what's the law that says that a community residence is a single-family residence for purposes of residence? And Pete said it was the mental hygiene law. Yeah.
Oh, but I thought that was, okay. So you're saying how do we allow those, is what you're saying?
Yeah, basically, as a pre-existing non-conforming, no.
Through laws, yeah. Yep.
I figured that there was a statute.
Forty-one point three-four F of the mental hygiene law.
Okay, so that sort of takes that out of town's discretion. All right, so nothing on three? Four?
Yeah, I just, a couple things. Was there, there must have been a pie or a poker, no, for three signs?
Um...
Must have. Yeah, because you wouldn't just put up three signs and nobody would say anything.
I actually couldn't find a permit for the existing signs.
Oh, so you did check.
They've been there a while, haven't they? Haven't they been there a while? Okay. I'm just kind of curious as to whether they're going to go up on any of the big signs, but we'll see.
Right. Oh, and the other question is, what do we have the sign package for?
I think these are separate parcels or something.
Well, that's right, we talked about this the last time, right? Because they're separate lots.
Same as McDonald's, I guess.
Okay.
I feel like they just could have been incorporated into Beatty Hall, it's still DeMarco.
They must have a reason for it. Five is the pediatric surgeon care. Okay. Six?
Question about six. Are there any other variances in the area? I looked at the map, couldn't find any, but there are a lot of big structures out there.
There's a lot, I just rolled through that, and there's a lot of big buildings.
Well, Andy, why don't you sort of reiterate what we were talking about before, about how to change in the law? Because you're right, well, you guys are right.
Prior to the codification of the code, the way that the code was worded, it said if you had five acres, there was no limit as to how big the accessory building could be.
Okay.
So that would explain a lot of stuff.
So a lot of people kind of fell under that, now it's a little different, and now they've got to apply for a variance.
Right, and actually, this applicant here, he checked on that under the previous code, and that's the reason he bought this property, because he knew that he could put in a big building, but then we had to inform him.
I actually spoke to him, he told me the whole story.
This kind of stuff is deceptive, because, you know, the boundary lines of the properties only exist on paper. And when you get into a rural kind of neighborhood, it's, you know, the impact isn't what it looks like on paper, so.
Well, for sure.
I guess that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Because it is big, but...
Yeah.
It is smaller than the house, correct?
It is smaller than the house.
Number seven, the Wilberts. Any questions on this? It's going to be tabled, right, because of the seeker?
Well, the planning board tabled it. They're, they're the lead agency under seeker, actually coordinated review. They haven't made a determination yet.
So you can't take action until after the planning board has done the seeker review, and then you can take action after that's completed?
So why are we here now?
I don't know.
Well, I think the plan is, Zach Nursing wants to coordinate a site visit with both boards, and this is, this will be more an opportunity for...
We'll be more informed.
...to make a presentation.
Yeah. That came out earlier, as you guys recall.
So, why is a coordinated site visit necessary for this one and not others?
I would say you only have to do...
I mean, it's fine, I went on, I made it, I just wondered.
I don't know, I just thought that, you know, being that both boards are reviewing it, and there's quite a bit going on there.
Yeah.
To help you understand exactly the scope of everything.
They could be dealing with ten different tours, too.
For my own edification, thank you. Great.
Okay, and number eight. The situation that's been there and in front of us now, I guess. All right. No questions on that one? All right, so then we're pretty clear on all the stuff that's out anyway. Nothing else to take care of now. So we will then stand in recess for it looks like about sixteen or seventeen minutes until the public hearings start. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. The first part will be public hearings. We will ask the applicant to come up to that podium there, give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. After the applicant has done with the presentation, board members will likely have some questions, and then we'll ask anyone in the audience that wants to speak about the application to do the same thing. Come up to that podium, give us name and address, and then speak their mind about the application. After the public hearings are adjourned, we will take a brief recess, and we'll reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's applications and take care of any other business that the board may have. Members of the public are certainly welcome both at the hearings and the deliberations, although generally speaking deliberations are time reserved for conversations among board members, board members with staff and with counsel as necessary. Tonight's agenda is fairly long, so we'll, I think we're going to be here a while. I don't want to deter anybody from staying that wants to stay, but if you choose to leave or you need to leave, you can call tomorrow and ask what action the board took out on a particular application.
We're closed tomorrow.
Pardon me?
We're closed tomorrow.
Closed tomorrow?
Sorry, it's Good Friday.
I did not get the memo, okay, all right, fair enough, fair enough.
You can come in, it's okay.
Yeah. In any event, every month we like to point out that we think the town does a really good job of letting people in the town know about applications that they're going to be on, and they're going to be heard, and the town does that, so people are fully informed of their rights to come in and speak about the applications. We like it because it helps us do our job, and the town does that by sending postcards to neighbors if you live within a certain distance, by posting the agenda on the website and here at the town hall, by asking the applicant, well, telling the applicant to put up a sign in the yard, so when you drive by, you see, we've all seen those signs, that's why they're there. And as I said, we think it's good for the process, and we enjoy hearing all the different opinions. With that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, Andy?
Heidi Ames, eleven-ten Brick Landing Place, Webster, New York, one-four-five-eight-zero, requests a use variance under section two-fifty dash fourteen-point-three of the code to allow a multiple-family use within a single-family residential district at twenty-five-seventy-five Broncroft Boulevard. The property is owned by Heidi Ames and is owned R-1-20, SBL number one-two-three-point-zero-eight dash one dash two-nine, application number nineteen-Z dash zero-zero-one-four.
Hi.
My name's Heidi Ames. I live at eleven-ten Brick Landing Place, Webster, New York, one-four-five-eight-zero. Today, I'm here to share with you the reasons why I'm applying for the use variance, the property that I own, with the address of twenty-five-seventy-five Broncroft Boulevard. The property, since nineteen-seventy-nine, was, has been owned and operated by Mary Carriola as Children's Center, and the building has thirty-three hundred square feet, and currently it's, it is identified with the Monroe County as a med building.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, Andy, can we get the portable mic there if possible? We just want to make sure everyone's able to hear. The, which one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
Thanks.
Maybe not.
Did you hear that?
There's a button on the left, hold it.
It's great.
Should I just go on, or?
Yeah.
Okay. I've, I've owned this building since March of two thousand eighteen. I'd like to illustrate the layout of this property, of this structure. Here it's Broncroft Boulevard, and this is the main entrance. You go in there, here's a kitchen on the right, then community dining, community living room, and also on the outer space, in the outer space of this structure, a few bedrooms, bedroom number one, two, three, four, and five. And also, there are three different offices. Office number one, number two, and this area is also used as the office, and also three bathrooms, one, two, and a powder room, three. And here's a garage, one-car garage, and also laundry facility. One thing very unique about this house is that there are ten exits that, to the exterior. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So, obviously, this is not a regular residential single-house, the way it is set up. Here are a few pictures to show the community kitchen and dining area. Here, here's the kitchen, okay. It is designed and built in a way that is able to accommodate more than a single-family, because Mary Carriola was using it to cook for children and staff in this facility. And here is the community dining room. This table here, it's about twelve feet long, and as you can easily see, that the twelve feet long table does not even take up a quarter of the space. So it is set up in a very unique way, again, single families do not have this kind of kitchen or dining area, so it's very unique. And also, as you can see, here's open space between the dining area and the next area in the, in the main community living space. So this is very unique, it's, it does not look or function like a single-family house. Here are a few pictures to illustrate is a community living room space. Again, this is a gigantic area, because all the children with physical challenges had this as the activity room. It would be able to hold a large TV, and many couches, and still be able to have activity space. And one thing I would like to point out is that, as you can see from here, there are hoist rails that have been set up for the previous use for Mary Carriola, and they're still there. So, this is not a regular living room either, so it is, obviously, has been used, and it is designed as a community living room with activities, multiple areas of activities And one more thing to point out, from the community living room, it can access all the bedrooms, directly you walk in, it's your bedroom, and walk out, it is the community room. So all the unique features and also the design are set up for anything but a single-family. Offices and med room, there are three office spaces in this facility. As you can see, that there are just all kinds of stuff there, it's, they cannot be, currently they cannot be used as, as bedrooms. And here's the med room, what they used to call, with the kitchen sink, not kitchen, with sinks, and countertops, and also the cupboards. Again, it's simply not set up or designed for single-family. Bathrooms and bedrooms. One thing unique about this, the bedrooms in this house is that they all have the exterior doors, so, because for the safety of the children, and the cold, and all that, so they all have the, the second exit to the, you know, for the safety of it. So again, is that typical single-family? No, I, I don't know about your single-family homes, I do, certainly do not have that feature in my house or houses. And here are the bathrooms, that shows, it's definitely not the setup, the homey, the comfy kind of bathrooms that a regular house, a single-family house would have. And also, please notice the windows in the bedrooms, they are above the eyesight, so people, even as tall as Andy probably would not be able to, to see the outside, they are set up purely for letting in the light, not for looking in or look out. So, again, it's not a typical single-family house. Here's a back and side yard, further shows the, the windows, just tiny bit, to let out, letting the lights. Sorry, keep you busy, Andy. Thank you. According to R-120 in town of Penfield, under two-fifty dash two-point-two, the definition of family is any number of individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit and preparing their food as one unit. So, currently, there are four individuals sharing this room. They share the full access of common areas, that including living room, kitchen, bath, and also sharing cleaning responsibilities and all the upkeep of the house, well, not, like the roof, they're not going to climb up the roof, too, but just the regular housekeeping, and also the maintain part of the yard. According to my further research, I believe that I still have the valid non-conforming use rights for this property. Used to be Mary Carriola Children's Center, where it was not, the usage of the house was clearly not a single-family. And also, the change of ownership does not void the valid non-conforming use rights of this building. And currently, the usage of this building has significantly decreased the intensity of traffic, and also the type of vehicles, the number of vehicles parking in front of Additionally, I would like to share with you the annual, the major expenses at this property. The real estate taxes, approximately seventy-six hundred dollars, the RGE, very high because of, because the setup of the building, it's over forty-five hundred dollars, the lawn and snow, and that part of the maintenance is over two thousand, and also the repairs of the house is five thousand. Insurance is approximately three thousand dollars, and security alarm at this building, the monitoring service is five sixty, and the garbage removal is approximately six hundred, and the mortgage, I refinanced my house. So, the expenses add up more than thirty-three thousand dollars. Well, talking about if we successfully being able to change the use, is the usage from single-family definition of that to, to have the use variance, would there be negative impact to the neighborhood? The answer is no. The requested use variance would not alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood. And also, again, there won't be any school buses as before, or ambulance, and so many cars out there. Yes, we do have, right now, we have about twelve to fifteen parking space right in front of the building. So, again, that nature, that characteristics of this property also further, you know, demonstrates that this is not a regular single-residence, because we probably do not have the park, the whole entire front yard as a parking lot. So, that traffic volume has been significantly reduced. For the past few months, this house has been home for multiple individuals. I have been very transparent with them about the journey with the town. So they offered to write down their testimony of their experience of living in this place. I would like to share that with you. Here's the testimony from Lorenzo. To whom it may concern, my name is Lorenzo Joseph, and I'm one of the tenants that lives at twenty-five-seventy-five Broncroft Boulevard, Penfield, New York. I have been living at this location for several months, and I do enjoy and love everything about living here, such as affordable rent, friendly tenants... Where's my glasses? Laundry facility, small friendly community, and the house is, and the house in general. All of the other tenants have been living here for several months as well, and we're all responsible working adults, each one with their stable jobs. I currently work for Amazon, and living at this location allows me to be close to work. This is from Lorenzo. And the second one is from Brandon. He is the manager at Trader Joe's. He said, my name is Brandon Corey. I have been living here, living here for almost six months, at the address twenty-five-seventy-five Broncroft Boulevard. I work at Trader Joe's and also do construction. This place has been great to live in for the safety and the amenities. Heidi offered this place, has plenty of room and updated appliances, fire system and generator for power outs. If any questions, please feel free to, to call. And another one is from Travis, Travis Cooley. I'm a newer member to Heidi's community family. The great location and affordability is which first got my attention to want to move in. The house itself is great. Heidi also making dinner, makes dinner for all of us tenants to sit down and enjoy together, which helps everyone get to know each other. The house even has laundry on site, which is also a great gift. I work full-time and always have been in construction industry. I currently work for Corbell, Inc. So, I hope I'm able to share with you, the information that I share with you about the structure, the uniqueness about the facility, and also, use variance will not change the characteristics of the neighborhood, and would, for anything, will reduce the traffic and density of the traffic, and the types of vehicle parking in the front. Also, the fact is that it will, and it has, created some major financial difficulties for me, because it has been in discussion, and has been quite a journey for me for many, many months. I hope to get this resolved. And also, from the testimonies of the people who live there, everybody is a working, responsible individual, so it has been home for them, and I hope... So it has been home for them, and I hope to gain your understanding and support in this matter so I can successfully gain the use variance. Thank you very much.
So you spent a lot of time talking about the unique structure of the building and the layout. Can I ask why you did that? What was your purpose in talking about that?
It is because the main reason that the town has been in some major, having different major differences in opinion about this building is that because it is currently in residential zoning.
Right.
And according to the letters that I received, they believe that this is a single-family structure. So that's why I would like to illustrate to you that the structure, the layout, and the functionalities, and also with ten exits and the parking lot right in the front of the house and all that demonstrates that this is not a single-family house.
I'm just curious to hear you say it like that. To be honest with you, I kind of expected just the opposite, but okay. You're here today requesting a use variance.
Correct.
And are you familiar with the standards that you have to demonstrate to this board before this board can grant you the use variance?
I believe I have to show a few things, aspects.
Right.
One is that the use variance will not negatively impact the neighborhood and also to show the financial difficulties or the financial impact it will have on me. And also, I reasoned why this house is for more than a single family.
Okay. Well, the financial aspect, I want to talk to you about that for a little while. Well, you can certainly wait your turn, absolutely. The financial standard is you have to demonstrate to us that you cannot realize a reasonable return on the property. So I want to ask you a little bit about that. Believe me, I appreciate your predicament. I hope you understand that. I think everybody here that's on this day appreciates that. But you have to also, I hope, appreciate that we have a job to do as well. So when you purchased the property, did you purchase it with the intent to rent out the rooms?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have an attorney that represented you on the closing?
Yes.
And were you aware when you purchased the property that it was zoned for single family?
It was clearly stated on the sales sheet. It is a med building.
I'm sorry, it's a...
Med building. Medical building? So it's not a single family.
All right. And what, if anything, did you or your attorney do to confirm whether or not that statement was true?
I called the county, and they verified it is true.
They verified that it's a medical building?
It's called a med building. I don't know how to interpret that, but it's not a single-family house on record.
All right. Well, you know now that it's zoned single-family. Okay. So one of the factors that you have to show in addition to the financial hardship is that your situation was not self-created. So and something that we are supposed to consider in that regard is whether you knew or should have known what the zoning was, knowing what your intended use was. So I'm struggling, to be candid, with the notion that you purchased the property with intent to rent it, were represented by an attorney, and you didn't put in a condition of your offer that you would receive approval to operate it as a rental property. I'm struggling with how that is not a self-created situation.
Well, I did call the county to verify, so it's not a single family. I recognize the fact it is in the zoning of a single family. It's in the single-family zoning, but that building is not a single-family building.
Of course, yeah.
I think maybe this is where the confusion is. If you call the county, it could be classified as something different than a single family as far as tax assessment. However, there's a law in New York that says, it's in the mental hygiene law, that a community residence, which is what this was for Mary Carriola, is by definition considered a single-family structure. So while the use you think wasn't a single family, by definition set by law, it's considered a single family. Therefore, there was no nonconforming use legally, and there's no pre-existing nonconforming use.
In other words, the use that Mary Carriola made of the site, compared to the use that you're proposing, it's apples to oranges from a legal classification standpoint.
It's changing the whole structure around to make it work.
Okay. I'll accept your apology, but I got to ask you. There are probably a lot of people who want to speak about this, so we need to take our turn. Okay. Believe me, I appreciate the emotion of the situation very much. Have you, you've owned it for about a year, so you probably haven't made any attempts to sell the property.
I have. I have contacted two different Realtors.
Okay.
And very candidly, discussed with them, what's the chances of listing it for sale as a single family?
Right.
Their reply is zero.
Okay.
It's not a single family. The setup, the layout, the functionality, it's not a single family. One thing is that would any of you ladies and gentlemen moving there, your family, or your children's family, or your grandchildren's family there, use it for the use of a single family? With ten exits, with everything that we just went through? That's why I took the time and effort to explain to you to help you understand that the house is not set up for a single-family usage.
It's set up as a community residence, is what it's set up for, because that's what it was. And that, by legal definition, is considered a single-family for zoning purposes, which is also different than a boarding house, which is another thing entirely.
Well, the definition of family here in Tanga Penfield does state that any number of individuals sharing the household responsibilities, the housekeeping, is regarded as a single family. And the folks who live there now, they do exactly that.
Okay. Do you have individual leases with folks that rent?
I did turn in at the time of application.
Okay. But do you currently have individual written leases with the people that reside there?
Yes, I do.
And each individual has a separate lease?
Correct.
Do they all pay the same rent?
No.
Okay. Do they all buy their own food?
They do.
Are they all allowed to have visitors?
Yes.
You said you discussed a potential sale with some real estate agents, and they said it wouldn't be successful to list it as a single-family residence.
Correct.
So because of that, you made no such effort?
I have had the Realtor walk through the building, and this is something that I've been anticipating, hoping for, for quite some time, so I'm going to wait for the result.
Okay. When you first looked at the property, do you remember what the asking price was?
The listing price was about $130,000, I believe.
And how much did you pay for it?
I paid about $177,000. And by the way, one very interesting fact. At the time, when I put in the purchase offer, there was one other party. The reason that I paid so much higher than the asking price was because another party was bidding, sort of bidding this property. And that is an organization called Hillside. So if they have successfully, if they had successfully purchased this property, it would not be used as a single-family either. Because this house, this structure is not set up as a single-family.
Any other questions from folks?
So when you, before Mary Carriola owned this house, was it a single-family residence?
I could not find anything online, but I have heard from one of the members in the town that it was originally built as a single-family. However, what I'm not so sure about is what alteration, what plan, how Mary Carriola had changed the plan, because I never have the prints of the original house, and I do not have the prints of how or if Mary Carriola made changes to the house. So according, I could not research anything online, but according to what I was told by one of the members in the town, it was originally built as a single-family.
Yeah, it actually was built by the, the architect is the person who designed the mushroom home, believe it or not. And I believe he wanted to live there with his family. So it was a single-family home. And that was my next question, which you answered, which is, you know, what kind of alterations were made? I also looked on Zillow and Realtor.com, and it is listed as a single-family property quite clearly. So I wondered if you had seen that.
I believe I have also turned in a sales sheet from the times that I purchased the property. It was listed as a med building. Clearly as a med building. It's not, it does not say it's a single-family house.
Do you have any of those sheets from, like the fact sheet when you go into a house, and you go into an open house, there's that sheet?
Did I turn it in? Okay. During the recess, I will come up with something on my phone, perhaps. I do not have it right now printed out, but it is clearly stated as a med room, a med building.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Your presentation assumes that you're going to leave the property as it's presently situated functionally. Have you looked into what it would take to take away some of the features that make it not a single-family? Like, for instance, walling off the exits from the bedrooms or moving some interior walls around to cut up that space? Since it was a single-family originally, it seems like it could go back to single-family with the right kind of alterations.
I would not have the financial resources to do that.
Have you, do you know that for a fact?
I did have someone who mentioned it to me. I said, "Maybe this can be separated into two or three families." But because of the journey that I've had with the town, I don't dare to open up that kind of worms.
Okay. I mean, to some extent, you've opened another can of worms.
Yeah. Any other questions? Have you done any alterations to the house?
Nothing major. Repairs here and there, and put things back together, the roof, a little bit.
Have you thought about calling Hillside to see if they'd be willing?
I did, in fact. I did. Number one, I asked them if they would lease. They said, "No, we never lease." So then I asked if they would consider to buy. They said currently that's not in their plan. I did, I did a lot of calling around. I called just about everybody in town, the non-for-profit organizations, the veterans, the Christian Family Center. I called just about everyone. But one of them was interested. It's called MC Collaborations. And they submitted their application to do just about exactly what Mary Carriola was doing. And the town, two different departments told them, "No, you cannot do it."
Anything else from the board? Okay. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this?
Do you guys mind? Sorry.
No, you're right. You just have to wait your turn, but that's all right.
If you're going up there, you don't need the mic either.
You can give us your name and address.
I'm Brandon. My address is where we are talking about right now. This is the Mary Carriola. It was built by the guy that owns the mushroom houses. It was intended as a single-family house. It would have to be modified significantly in order to make that into a single-family house. It was set up by the organization before that took care of the children that were there and everything else. And it is laid out, so you can have a nice area to sit and everything else. All the rooms are there for a reason, because you can have privacy, have your own room. You have plenty of bathrooms. It's quite a structure, you know. You would have to dump a lot of money into this to make this into a single-family house. I don't know if that's something that she wants to do. I know it's zoned as that, but it is literally got the bedrooms, I don't know how many, I don't know, nine or something? And four, three bathrooms, three and a half bathrooms? So, which isn't, you know, I mean, there's houses that have nine and three bedrooms or nine and then four bathrooms. But anyways, it's convenient for people to rent because of the way it's set up. So I'm not saying that it shouldn't be zoned as a single-family house, but you have to change a lot of it to make it a single-family house. So.
Okay. Any questions for this gentleman? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome. Anyone else care to speak about this application?
Want my name, telephone, address?
Yes, please.
Barbara Massey Suddy. I live 2579 Bronkraft Boulevard, next door to this place here. And the whole area is changing. I'll be first to tell you that. We know the three houses beyond hers, they're different things. They're not single-family any longer. However, they're not boarding houses either. And I live next door, and I don't know if I'm thrilled with having it to a boarding house because it's a single-family thing. I tried to get some things done, and single-family, that's all of us do it. That's all of us do it. But they have, I think one would be, you probably know more than I do, bread and breakfast, another one might be apartments. The third one, I don't know what it is, but there's a lot of cars there all the time, and it's very, they did a beautiful job with bowing and everything. It's also across the street is a church, so I don't know how come it's always single-family. But to me, I mean, I don't want a boarding house next to me exactly. I really don't. I live alone. I'm an older lady, as you can see. When they first all moved in, I went, "What the hell? What am I next to? All people coming and going, all this stuff." And Monday, the police were over, and I mind your business, went home, mind my business, and it's not a single-family house now. The man in Brittany built it. I've lived there 45 years, so I live next door to him, and I just don't know. It's not, no longer a single-family neighbor. We all know that, right? A lot of things have changed. But that's a step further, I think. That's only my opinion, but if you guys said it, I'll be a nice neighbor. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, if you move.
Thank you. One of the things is that you did ask me if I have explored to perhaps attempt to sell or just find, I don't know, the right people to, for the right location. The church across the street, they approached me, and they were considering that as a woman's shelter. So with that being said, I don't think the next owner or the next usage would be a single-family, no matter how you look at it, because it is not set up as a single-family.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience care to speak about this? Come on up, sir.
Well, my wife, I wouldn't speak, but. You may remember several years ago.
Can you give us your name and address?
Oh, Martin Turberg, 124 Farm Brook. And I'm about a mile away from this. I walk by there every day. A few years ago, we had a situation up on Ross Brook. The lady basically started a boarding house. Mike, you remember.
I do.
And the big concerns, the major concern was, all of a sudden, we had strangers wandering around the neighborhood, including one gentleman that ended up having three federal warrants out on him. And the problem was that he was approaching people, asking for money. So number one, my question is, where do these people come from? Transient people are not the same as people that own and pay taxes every year. Number two, I've been in that building three, four times when I was in Rotary, visiting the children. And I thought, this is several years, this is back in the nineties, I thought the building needed a lot of work. I don't know what it, whether any of it was done or not. It just looked pretty decrepit. And that's a concern too, because, you know, how, if she's having financial problems now, how are you going to keep this building up or bring it up to code? So that's my concern. It's a beautiful neighborhood. It was rated a very high neighborhood, and I like to keep it that way. I had, as I said, I walked by two weeks ago, and there was an old beat-up snowmobile sitting in the front yard. Stayed there three, four days and disappeared. But stuff like that bothers me. So that's my say on it.
Yeah, I hear you on that, and I appreciate that. I'll tell you that you can go to several neighborhoods in this town and see old beat-up snowmobiles and automobiles, and, and I appreciate where you're coming from. I don't, I don't see anything, we don't have anything in front of us that lead, would lead us to believe that we have anything other than good-law-abiding citizens, working people living in that house presently. You know, whatever the future may hold, may hold, but by all indications that.
One of the questions you could ask is, how does she get her tenants?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you so much for the questions and concerns. I would love to address them. Number one, the tenants, all of the tenants that we have, we interview them through a different process. Pretty much it's three steps. And all of them work. They have stable jobs. And in fact, we have, this, only one person moved away was because he moved to Canada to get married. But other than that, we've had very stable folks, such as Brian, living there. And he has offered to get a lot of work down there, and he does. And that's one thing. In terms of the snowmobile, I did address that. As you said, you saw it a few days, and, you know, the, the guy said that he could not move it to the backyard because it's too wide for the door, but he was able to find a garage to store it for, for him. And what's the third one? I'm sorry. Oh, financial. I was, in fact, I started the process of remodeling the inside. And Andy can testify that. I applied for remodeling permit, because I was going to do a few things in there to, to, for paint, to moving, to change the carpet, and also open up more windows, some egress windows and all that. However, when I just, in fact, I already purchased the materials. But because the dialogues continuously have been going on with the town for many, many months, that whole entire process was delayed. Therefore, I had to return the materials. So I have all intentions to keep up the property. If you go back, you would see that the property already looks much better than before because of the new fresh coat of paint. And we also planned to, to, what do you call that? To put the blacktop, the seal on the driveway. And also, the sidewalk needs some repair, because previously, Mary Carriola had the, whatever, yeah, the buses, ambulance, they damaged the sidewalk. And I, I would do that next week if you grant me the use variance. I already talked to DOT, and I know the exact process to pursue that. So I will, even if that we do not, me, I do not live in this house, but I also drive by this house twice a day, going to work and coming back to work, and I stop by there two, three times a week. So I do not live there, but it's very much hands-on. So the tenants' quality are good, and financially, yes, it has been very much of a big stretch because of the ongoing dialogue, because of the disputes with the town. But as soon as this is resolved, I will be able to do some major, not major, but I will be able to improve on the, on the property.
How many tenants do you expect to have in there?
Currently, I have four. I will be, because there are five bedrooms, and if the town would grant me the permission, I will probably put egress in one of the other rooms. So it will be, it will be very much manageable, considering the size and also the setup of the house. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Again, I did not even have you, tell him to come. He just came. And another tenant sent me a text message and said, I will be praying for you because we love living here.
Andy, you can feel free to help her with that. I couldn't reach it.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Yes, please.
Michael J. McDonald and David M. McDonald, Superfly DMC LLC, 311 Toby Road, Pittsburgh, New York, 14534. Request a conditional use permit under Section 250-13.3, Section 250-5.7-C1A, and Section 250-6.3-E2B of the Code to allow the operation of a restaurant at 2157 Penfield Road. The property is owned by Wegmans Food Markets Incorporated and its own general business, SBL number 139.02-1-2.3, application number 19Z-0015.
Thank you. I'm Michael McDonald, and I live at 311 Toby Road in Pittsburgh. That's my son, David.
I'm David McDonald. I live at 64 Hillside Road in Penfield.
So we're, again, applying for a conditional use permit to open up a restaurant. We signed a lease with Wegmans for the old Lindbergh property, between City Mattress and Supercuts and the Wegmans Penfield Plaza. And it's a fast casual type format, where folks come in and come up to a counter, take their order, we take their order, give them a number, they go to a table, and we run out the orders to them when they come in. David's our chef. He's got about between twenty and twenty-five years of experience in the restaurant business. Was last, the last twelve years was the executive chef out at Finger Lakes Gaming and Casino, or Gaming and Race Track. And American Melting Pot, Ampt food is what he came up with, amplified American food. So it's kind of a, let's put it this way, I can't wait till it opens, because I want to eat there. It's good food. He's been trying out all the recipes on the rest of us. But we don't, we don't actually anticipate any problems. It is the own general business that's been used as a restaurant in the past. And we're not really changing the footprint of the, the building dramatically. We're, the primary existing wall is where the kitchen is, is where it's going to remain. The dining room will be laid out basically the same. We did tear out, if you're familiar with it, a lot of Penfield residents were. We did tear out the platform in the back of the area, so it's more of an open dining area. And so we're going with kind of an industrial feel to the interior. We have kind of the polished concrete floors, and it will have drop ceiling, a new drop ceiling in it, but it's kind of a decorative ceiling. And I don't know beyond that. We've got, that's pretty much the layout of the interior. On the exterior, of course, there's no real difference other than the signage. Did you put up?
Yeah.
So you can see that. So as far as traffic goes, we're hoping there's a lot. But in our forecast, we're trying to be conservative, so we're anticipating in the first year that we will gradually build up to probably about 200 customers a day. We're hoping that it comes to at least that. We break even somewhere around 150. And, and then we gradually grow beyond that. So days we're going to be open, we're hoping to be open, or we're hoping to be closed Sunday, Sunday and Monday. We'll be open Tuesday through Friday, 11 to 8. And then Saturday morning just seems to be a big time that people like to go out to breakfast in Rochester. So we're going to have a Saturday morning brunch, or brunch, so we'll open at 7:00. And the hours will be until 8:00 PM in the evening for the dinner. Anything you want to add to that, Dave? So what would you like to know?
Well, thank you. That was a very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
You answered a lot of my questions already.
Oh, good.
I don't usually hear the word "fly" and "restaurant" in the same, so I'm wondering how you got that title.
Let me put it this way. I'm 72, and when David proposed Superfly DMC, I said, what? But everybody under 50 loves it, but he can give you some background if you like.
The name is just, Superfly is kind of like a slang term for cool. And, and so it's just kind of my, my feel for the place. It's something that kind of celebrates the, the things that I like, you know, as somebody that's creative. So there's, there's kind of a tie-in to even the decoration of the place, just the art that we've selected, you know, the music we're going to play on the speakers in the restaurant. It's, it's kind of the feel of the whole place.
So now that you've made me feel very old, because I didn't know Superfly was.
Well, now you know, so you're, you're in the club.
Thanks. So. Is there any live music being planned for the?
No.
Okay. So only piped music?
Yes.
And then you can obviously not have to worry about sound?
Exactly.
And things like that? Okay. And then you said number of employees? Did you mention that? I know it's in the document.
It's, depending on how many are full-time and part-time, somewhere between 15 to 20.
Okay. And no outdoor seating, right?
No.
Okay. Okay, you actually answered all my questions. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I think your dad's young enough to remember Superfly.
Yeah.
That was a seventies thing. Come on. Yeah. Song, that's a top forty song of that, too.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I'll sing it for you sometime.
We're looking at putting a graphic up on the wall. We have a kind of a feature wall as you walk in by the counter. And there's actually a kind of an Urban Dictionary definition of Superfly as being, you know, suaveness, taken like to the next level. So it really has to do with excellence, things done really well. And so we're going to put that definition up on the wall.
Good.
Sounds good.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heritage Christian Services Incorporated, 275 Kenneth Drive, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14623. Request a conditional use permit under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.1-E1E of the Code to allow the operation of an adult day habitation, habilitation facility at 1280 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is owned by Heritage Christian Services Incorporated and is owned rural agricultural two-acre, SBL number 095.03-1-13.114, application number 19Z-0016.
Hi, my name's Dan Stewart. I'm the Director of Facilities for Heritage Christian Services. A little bit about Heritage Christian Services. Organization was founded in 1984. Started with four families, created a group home for their children, which was up in Webster. Fast forward 35 years now, we oversee around 120 different properties, over 75 certified homes, 20-plus day programs and what have you throughout Monroe County. It goes far north, or far west is Buffalo, up on Grand Island. So we do have a presence up there. Currently in Penfield, we operate nine homes, two-day programs. So this property here, 1280 Nine Mile Point Road, we currently do own the property. So our proposal is to run a day habilitation site from this facility. Our typical operator, day, our hours of operation typically are from 8:00 till 4:00 PM. Residents would come from their home or their community, potentially homes that Heritage do, does operate, would come to this facility throughout, throughout the day. They may be involved in the community, they may work right from the site, they may have lunch at the site, they may have maybe physical therapy or occupational therapy that may come into the site. So it's a wide variety of what might happen in here. Transportation could be supplied by Heritage, could be supplied by other outside vendors also that would transport people in and out of the site. Garbage, we have a dumpster there. We would have a recycle bin that's out behind the shed currently. Building design, so this is, this is what the current layout looked like when we purchased it. So what we're doing is just moving some partitions on the restrooms to make them a little more conducive for our use. We'd like to create this into a kitchenette area through here, put some walls up to divide this room here, and then this little area right here would become a med room for the needs of the individuals on the site. That's what this here kind of reflects, general terms. We're not doing anything to the exterior of the building, short of maybe just a few wall packs that we're swapping out to LEDs. We may put a video surveillance in the backyard, just to make sure we don't have kids in the evening hours there. As far as use off-hours, there may be a potential that somebody may use it, Heritage employees or staff use might be nights on weekends, but very, very limited on that. Currently, there are 42 parking spaces. My opinion, I would see that we would need maybe 15 to 20 throughout the daily operations, so we have plenty. The parking field was outstanding when we purchased it. You know, and there is some lawn area on each side for the, you know, for people to enjoy some lawn. I don't anticipate the need for any fence or anything else. I don't anticipate the need for any fence or anything else there. The only other thing that we came into are, our parking loop here, more than likely won't be used that well because of the height of the roof line there, so. So if there was any other questions?
So, thank you, thorough presentation. So I questioned workshop, you said that there might be some onsite workshop, super vice workshop?
Well, it would be working on skill sets, not producing anything.
Okay.
So it would be working on maybe computer skills, financial skills, potentially a little bit of light cooking skills, what we would concentrate on there.
Thank you for that. And you mentioned a med room?
Yep.
I assume that's gonna be protected, secure?
Yes, there will be a lock on the exterior door, usually interior cabinets will all be locked also, depending on the level, if, if there is a narcotic there, or what the level is needed. Quite regulated by different departments on here, so.
So you're following all the protocols from the...
Yes.
State, okay.
Yep.
And are there any overnight accommodations for this?
No, we don't anticipate anybody there overnight. The only thing that I would see in the evening is that if I have a project going on in a house, that somebody might come up there to have dinner, and then return back to the house by bedtime.
Okay. And are there any safety measures you need to take, other than the med room?
We will have a full fire system throughout the house, it, the building, it is not sprinkled. 24-hour staffing will be awake at all times, so there is no, so that we'll be protected that way.
Okay, that was on my head, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Thank you, sir.
Sign and lighting services, 530 Route 104, Ontario, New York, 14519. On behalf of KeyBank, request a special permit under Section 250-10.3 and Section 250-10.13-C of the code to allow more than one building-mounted sign at 1848 Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC and is zoned general business, SBL number 093.02-1-23.3, application number 19Z-0017.
Good evening, my name's Jay Hersey, I'm with Sign and Lighting Services, 530 State Route 104 in Ontario, and I'm representing KeyBank, where one sign is allowed, and we're requesting five signs. Presently, there are three existing signs, and we were, we were asking to add two additional.
Okay, size of the signs?
Roughly, the size of the signs are a foot and a half by eight foot, plus a two-foot key, so it's about 18 square feet each. What they're gonna do is they're gonna renovate the roof, the peak of the building, all four sides, because there's glass up there now, and they're gonna close that in. So what they'd like to do is get the signs from lower on the ground, where you can't see them, and move them up to the peak. And by catching the four elevations, you'll be able to visibly see it coming down Creek Street, so you can pull in sooner down the access road without passing it. You'll see it from the intersection of Empire, and then you'd also see it coming down from the other direction. And then once people are in the plaza, they're looking to, they would like to have a sign facing the plaza.
I just, this looks obvious, but I've been asking the question anyways. The KeyBank, the key, the red key, in relation to the lettering, approximately a third of the whole sign?
Yes.
So that, that complies with the requirements that it not be more than 50%?
Correct.
So you're okay there?
Yes.
How long has KeyBank been in this location?
I'm not positive, but I think since they took it over from First Niagara, I believe it was in there five, five, six years.
Okay, is it a successful location?
Well, it's a bank. I'm not familiar with the success of the bank. They're, they're requesting this, obviously, for branding, corporate branding, maybe to get more people in there, you know, with, with more signage, designating, you know, it brings in, brings in more clientele.
Okay. We have five standards that we're required to look at in any application for signage variance. And the first four basically talk about the overall standards for permitted signs and the effects on neighboring properties. And I don't think, you know, generally, that's usually not an issue with most of the applications for more signage. But the fifth one says the proposed sign is necessary to adequately identify the business. Sort of having a problem with this, your answers, I don't know if they're your answers, but the applications answer to those five standards all talk about being in competition with other businesses in the area that have more than one sign, so they want more than one sign. Well, you already have more than one sign.
Correct.
And that's really not a standard for, for approving something like this. So why do you need, being that they've been in business and they've already had three signs, why do you need two more to adequately identify the business?
They're trying to capture the clientele coming from different directions, prior to getting to the bank.
But why is it necessary to identify the business adequately?
I think traffic flow as well, by, by having it on the, the north, actually be the south and the north side, you would be capturing people coming down Creek Street, so instead of passing it, going back onto the main road to come back in the entrance, they can cut down the back end access road, right after the, the back, or the side entrance to the plaza.
Well, you're already moving these signs up high.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And you never had a sign on the south aspect?
Correct.
And you want to add one?
And that, that was the reason, they wanted to try to capture the people coming down Creek Street.
I think you can see the other sign pretty much from Creek Street, myself, at least I did when I was going that way. And how, why the ATM sign?
Pardon?
Why the fifth sign?
Well, it's, it's four signs on the peak, and then the fifth sign would be down at the lobby when you walk in the front doors.
Isn't that, isn't it, is that this sign?
No, that, that was part of the package, that's existing.
So where is this fifth sign gonna sit? I see all four, I see five signs on four peaks. One, two, three, four, five.
It should be a non, non-illuminated plate letter set, 12-inch stack, it would be facing the McDonald's, it would be the northeast corner, as you're walking into the entrance.
Yeah, I don't see it in there, but you know, it was, it was this sheet here. Oh, that's not an, that's different than this. We have that, but sure looks like...
That's the full package.
It sure looks like, that's not an ATM?
That is, but that's external.
That's the ATM, that's our depositary.
No.
Okay.
I thought that was this. And the reason for that again, this one?
Once people are in the parking lot, they'd be able to know where the entrance was.
Otherwise, they couldn't find the door?
You got it.
Okay, just checking.
All right.
Anybody else in the plaza that has five signs on the building?
No.
How about four signs?
No.
Three?
Yes.
There's other, you know what they are?
I believe, I'm pretty sure McDonald's next door has three.
And we've given some, some businesses there because of location, so, all right, I have no other questions.
Anything, it's, that intersection, I live right around the corner, that intersection there is sort of an odd-shaped intersection, and the plaza is, as well as it's doing, has a little, the configurations aren't typical, let's say, so I understand the need for people to be able to find out where KeyBank is as they're driving, and for safety purposes. And I think frankly, that's one of the reasons why we've granted applications for more signage than is allowed, but I, I don't remember ever granting five. But in any event, I wanted to ask you, are there any plans for KeyBank to be on any of the pylon signs that are going up?
No, not at, not at this time.
Why is, why is that?
I don't believe they, they were addressed on that.
So you don't know why, why they've chosen not?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve Doms, Casco Plus R5, 12, 12 Sunan Drive, Suite 100, St. Louis, Missouri, 63143. On behalf of Chris Charnow, Acute Kids MSO LLC, request a special permit for a change of use under Section 250-5.7-B2 of the code to allow the operation of a pediatric urgent care clinic at 1243 Bay Road. The property is owned by WOW LLC and is zoned general business, SBL number 093.11-1-37.1, application number 19Z-0018.
Hi.
All right, my name is Brent Johnson, I'm with Midland General Contractors, Steve Doms couldn't make it tonight, I'm from Chicago, Illinois. We build urgent cares.
I was gonna ask, I was planning to ask a question about the Cardinals, but I sure as heck ain't gonna ask a question about the Cubs, right? Forget it.
Does Rochester have a major league baseball team? Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we...
You're starting off strong.
Yeah, I was gonna say, better backtrack.
All right, so as you know, this was a KeyBank in the past, in our opinion, and for the IBC and everything else, the use is pretty much a horizontal change. Parking is probably less than the bank. A typical urgent care of this size potentially could see, this is 2,700 square feet, plus or minus, okay, could potentially see up to 60 patients a day. This being specialty pediatric, even at that 60 patients a day, operating hours eight to eight, five patients per hour, with four employees. So we feel less, less, less impact on traffic than, than previously with the bank. Because it's pediatric, there will be no narcotics, there's no drug testing that you would find in a typical urgent care setting, it is specialty children, and when you say children, you are newborn to 18 years old, 19 years old.
How would this be advertised, I mean, how would somebody know that it's limited to...
We would reinstall the monument sign that was on the site there, the power's still out there. The building has limited visibility as far as signage, okay, there's a gable on the front, that would probably be a branding symbol, that would capture traffic from across the street coming into that intersection, and I don't, we're not installing the sign, so if there were special requests for the signs, that would be under a different...
No, I was just wondering how, you know, how a pediatric urgent care worked, because generally, you see urgent care, you, you'd go there if you were 35, 40.
Yeah, yeah, it's pediatric, there, it is, it's staffed by pediatricians or PAs, which would, physician's assistant?
Right.
That are, that specialize in pediatrics. Your typical digital x-ray room, the software is different, lower doses of radiation on the same digital equipment.
All right, how many, how many actual medical staff would you have, pediatricians, PAs, EPs?
Starting out, you would have, typically, you would have, your, your x-ray tech would be your receptionist, you would have a physician or a mid-level provider, probably an office manager, and a second provider. For, when it ramps up flu season, you might add another, a couple more providers or employees, but then again, it's only 2,700 square feet, you're not gonna push 100 patients a day through there.
Okay. In any one time, what do you think the maximum number of kids you could have in the waiting room?
You're gonna have five to six patient care rooms. There are currently 10 to 12 parking spaces, but there is a shared, there is shared parking with the, with the, the building next door. It's all the same development. Very rarely will you have all the rooms full and the waiting room full, which the waiting room would probably have 15 seats at the most.
Okay. Any changes to exterior lighting?
We would just upgrade, if there's any fluorescent lighting in there, it'd be upgraded to LED, but it's all recessed lighting. We're not gonna take down the drive-through, we would potentially use that for expansion in employee parking.
All right, and any other exterior changes to the building, so it's gonna look pretty much the same as it did before?
Just maintenance repairs.
Okay. That's all I have, Dan, it's pretty, it's pretty obvious.
I have a couple of questions. You could do drive-through strep tests through the, that might work.
You could, I suppose, sure.
No, seriously.
You know, you say that because there was in Bradley, Bradley, Illinois, a physician actually did the triage portion of patient care in a drive-through, it was like an old muffler shop.
Oh, man.
And it didn't last very long, if you can imagine, but...
Out of Denmark.
Right, and that's all we do is urgent care, we've done a quarter of a billion dollars in urgent care nationwide.
I was curious as to, if you're serving newborn to 18 years old, why you're not doing drug testing onsite?
I don't know if that's part of the model, I mean, typically, when you set up drug testing, when I say we're not doing drug testing, we're not doing DOT, INS, occupational medicine drug testing.
Okay.
Okay, certainly if, if a parent brought in an adolescent, they, they would do urine and blood tests, it'd be sent out for diagnostics.
Got it.
But my, my, the purpose of that statement was, drug testing in our industry is occupational medicine.
Thank you for the clarification.
Is this a franchise?
No, it's not.
No.
She's an individual physician, she works with one of the hospital systems, and she's taking us on herself with some private investors.
So it's not gonna be affiliated with one of the hospitals?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Habeck, 9 Suites View Drive, Fairport, New York, 14450. Request area variances to allow larger storage building that permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code, and a taller storage building that permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12C of the code at 1740 Salt Road. The property is owned by Paul and Diane Habeck and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 111.03-1-33.1, application number 19Z-0019.
Paul?
Yeah?
We printed these out. Do you want me to put more of them up, or?
I also got some additional, these are just Imperial, if anybody liked them, I got half of Imperial.
Sure, you brought copies.
Yeah, I could see.
Yeah. They're just stapled together.
Thank you.
And one's...
Sure, thanks.
My name's Paul Habeck, I reside at 9 Suites View Drive in Penfield, well, Fairport, Maryland I address, but Penfield, New York. I've lived over there for 35 years now, probably more than 35 years, closer to 40 probably. Built my first house on Suites Corners Road, right around the corner from Salt, and built the house I'm currently in about 16 years ago. Purchased this property at 1740 Salt Road with the intention to subdivide it into two five-acre parcels, which it was originally, and there's a house on one of the five-acre parcels, and that was approved last week. And I bought the property in order to subdivide it and to build a, a new residence there, hopefully the last one I have to build, and to put a structure up to store... the last one I have to build, and to put a structure up to store some of my play toys and things of that nature, and I can, I can fill it up pretty easily, I got enough stuff to fill it up. I just like to take a moment to tell you how I got to this point, I started looking for a piece of property about five years, six years ago, and I went to the town and I said, I'd like to build something, uh, larger scale in a pole barn type building to store my stuff and, you know, you know, wax it, clean it, you know, work on it a little bit, you know, and they said I needed five acres or more to do this, and I said it's gonna be a pretty large structure, and they said, okay, well, you're, you're all set, five acres or more, you can pretty much do whatever you want. So I started looking, and I've looked for, I think it's closer to six years I've looked, and I finally found this property, if you walk out my garage and look across at Salt Road, you're looking right at the property, I mean, I can almost throw a stone to this place, and we did not want to move out of this area. There are a few pieces of property we found were on propane, we really wanted to have natural gas, and we wanted to stay in that area because we love the area, we love the town. So, uh, I found this piece of property, I went down to the town, and I talked to them, and I said, hey, can I subdivide this back to where it was? I, I knew I would be able to, but they just, they put their, basically said, yes, that's not gonna be an issue. And at that time, I said, I'm also gonna build a large pole barn, I need to store my stuff, and this was, you know, a few months back, and, and they said, yeah, well, yes, you got five acres, that's, that's what you need five acres for. Like, great, nothing's changed, because I asked this five or six years ago, so I thought I was pretty all set, and I can sympathize with the young woman over here who was first up, because you're trying to dot your Ts, you're trying to get everything done, I know she called the county, I was trying to do the same thing, and I didn't get specific about the size, I didn't get specific about anything like that, I just said it was gonna be a large pole barn and I can store my stuff in there, you know, and, and I thought I was, I was fine, I didn't, had no idea if rules had changed, I don't know when they changed, a year ago, two years ago, a year and a half ago, apparently they changed. So, at the time, I hadn't purchased the property yet, so, and we turned around, I bought the property, and came back down and said, well, I gotta split it up, blah, 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 and I'm gonna, you know, put a pole barn up, and this is what I'm gonna do, and all of a sudden it's like, well, how big are you gonna build? Ah, you know, like this, oh, you can only build 1% of the lot. And I said, I was just down here a few months ago talking about the property before I purchased it, and I said I'm gonna build a large structure, nobody's saying about 1%. Well, you know, uh, that changed a year and a half ago or whatever, I don't, like I said, I don't know the dates, that all changed a year and a half ago or so, and you can't do that anymore, it's, it's, now it's restricted. And I said, gee, I bought this property especially for this purpose, this is what, you know, I mean, and he said, look, and we can apply for a variance, so that's exactly what I did. In applying for the variance, I also asked him, I, I actually said, well, look, in the event I can't, don't acquire a variance, I can build as big a garage as I want, as long as it's attached. And he said, no, you can't do that, and I said, well, not for nothing, it was within the last year, I called down here to ask that specific question, because I couldn't find five plus acres, and I thought, well, we'll see, maybe I can design something, maybe I can make something work, and they said, no, as long as it's attached, you can build as big a garage as you want. And he said, well, that's not the case, and I said, well, man, I, I just asked about this not that long ago, it was like a year ago. And, uh, you know, I don't really wanna do that anyways, I don't wanna go that direction, but at least I had another resort or way to turn, a way to turn to, to do something, because I bought the property already, and I don't wanna move out of the area. So, uh, I'm not, I mean, everybody at the town has been super awesome, super great, I love them all, they're friendly as can be, helpful as can be, but I literally walked from one department to the next department, and talked about applying for things and this and that, and I said, yeah, I can't build as big a garage as I want, you know, that's limited too, and I was told, oh, no, sure you can. So, I mean, this was in the same day, okay, I'm not even talking about months now or a year, I'm talking the same day I was told two different stories, so I'm kinda like, this is crazy, you know, I mean, I, I don't know whether I'm coming or going, that's why I come to the town to ask, because I, I don't wanna try to interpret the laws myself, you guys need to interpret them for us, it's that complicated, and I understand that they change constantly, it's even hard for you guys to interpret them. One guy looks at it one way, one lady looks at it another, somebody else looks at it this way, and everybody's looking at it, you know, different ways sometimes, and they're interpreted differently too, so, so we struggle trying to figure out what we can or can't do. Needless to say, I'm not gonna drone on and on about that, what I'd like to do is put up a pole barn, I really don't wanna build a big, huge garage on the side of my house, because I believe I can do that, and if I do it, I won't really have much need to store all these toys, because I'll be giving half of everything I own to my wife if I do that, she's not gonna like the looks of that at all. She wants kind of a farm-style house, and we have our, our, our pole building there, so, and I had to set my glasses down somewhere. What did I do?
Need your glasses, to find your glasses.
Oh, my, I had them, I had them in my hand. They're in my back pocket. See, I gotta listen to my wife. So, the house is gonna be 347 feet off the road approximately, which is pretty far off the road, the house over here is, is back at the back edge of my house, and sits back even further, the house over here, I can't recall where that is, but it's back pretty far too, back in this area, not back as far as I would build this structure, this structure would sit another 125 feet behind the actual, off, off the road, so it's actually probably a total of roughly, roughly 550 feet off the road, so it sits way back. It exceeds your height, but a lot of buildings around the area do. I think one, two houses down the south does that, and one of these, two houses to the north, I believe does that. There's a lot of buildings in the area that, you know, are similar, not always in size, some are larger, some are smaller, but if you go to Salt Road and go just the other side of Atlantic, there's two big, huge structures that sit back, and you can see them from the road, and, and there, there are people that have horses, and they've got multiple structures to boot, not just one, they have multiple structures, you know, with like, and I believe riding arenas and stuff like that, you know, I could've come here, my, my wife has a horse, my daughter's, I could've come here and said, I wanna build a horse arena, but I don't, they board their horses, so I don't have to worry about that one, unfortunately. And then, uh, just south, south of us, or, let's see, south side, that's the south side of Salt Road. Two houses north, there, there, there's a home here, and then there's a large structure here, and then a secondary structure as well here, plus he's got a garage, so there's multiple structures there, and pretty good-sized structures. Two houses south, uh, there's a, a home with another pole barn structure that's pretty tall, I'm sure it probably exceeds, that was just built a few years ago, that exceeds the height, I believe, it may not exceed the size, but they actually have two buildings, they have one for horses, and then they have this where they just keep their, you know, he's got a boat in there, and he's got a car, and they're friends of mine, they got, you know, they got all their stuff in there, so they store a lot of stuff in there, and then they have the horse barn as well, and then pastures. So, and, and there's many, many more, I mean, right, I forgot even, right behind our street, right, right up on, on, on Suites Corners Road, is a two-story barn up on the hill, and there's a, a home up there, but he's got a big, big two-story home up there, so, or two-story barn up there. So, these structures are, are common in the area, it's, it's, that, you know, what I'm gonna build is in character with the neighborhood, so to say, or in, in character with the area. Above and beyond that, we're gonna do it with some class, we're not gonna, it's not gonna be, you know, some building that's put up, you know, that's just gonna be an eyesore in the area, we're gonna do a two, two-tone building, we're, we're gonna do, I believe it's four windows. You guys have the, the copy, but I think there's four windows, some of these are just examples.
He's gonna say you have to use the mic any second, so, yeah.
This one here, okay, is, is probably more indicative, this is like, uh, the, the size of the building roughly, and this is indicative of what the building's gonna be, other things, we're just representing colors, like I have one that shows a, a black and white, we're considering black and white or dark gray and light gray, and I'm amenable to either one. The, but this is more similar to the structure that's actually gonna be there, there'll be, there'll be three windows on the front that are decent-sized windows, when I say the front, the windows are gonna face the road, and the narrower part of the building's gonna face the road, it'll be 56 foot wide, 80, it's a little different than what's on that sheet, but I think our dimensions on, on the application are the same, but on the plan, it's just slightly different, 56 foot wide, which is narrower than the house, the house is wider than that, but it's deeper than the house, and it's gonna be 80, 88 feet deep. And it sounds big, it's not huge, but it's, it's decent size, but I'm gonna fill it, I've got a 36-foot boat, well, actually it's 45 feet with a trailer, so, in order to have a little room on either end, you know, I, I need something that's 50-plus feet deep, you know, 55 feet deep or so. I have a 40-foot motorhome that's, you know, 12, 6 high, I have another boat that's 36-foot without the trailer, or 32-foot, excuse me, without the trailer, so that's gonna be 35, 36 feet with a trailer at least, because there's outboard motors on it. That's 11 foot tall on the trailer, so the height is, is needed to get these vehicles or these play toys, or what you wanna call them, inside the building, I have a racecar trailer, I race sprint cars on dirt, that's got height to it, because these cars have wings on them and stuff like that. The idea is to enclose all this stuff for multiple reasons. The prime reason is to keep them out of the weather, because they're expensive things, and I, I wanna keep them in nice condition. The other thing is to keep them from being in the yard, just as an eyesight, I mean, I, you know, I can shrink wrap them for the winter, and they can, because the boats won't be there in the summer, you know, they'll, the building will be mostly empty, I can shrink wrap them and put them outside out back, I don't really wanna do that, it's, it's not gonna be very conducive to, to the looks of neighborhood, it's not gonna look that great, I think it's a lot better inside the building, and the building will look a lot better without all these things outside. So the idea is to, to not store a bunch of stuff outside, in fact, to store little of nothing outside, the most I'd ever do is if I had something I had to store outside, it would be at the back end of the building, on the other side of the building, I don't even anticipate having anything, but if I did, you wouldn't even see it, you couldn't see it from the road, the building's 55 foot wide, it, it, you know, if I had a car that I was gonna work on or do something to, to, to fix up for myself, I would put it on the backside of the building, I don't anticipate even doing that, it, it's just not something I anticipate doing, but it wouldn't be seen even if it did. You know, we've lived in the area for a long time, we want to preserve the character of the neighborhood, the good looks of the neighborhood, we, we know a lot of people in the area, and, you know, our goal is to, to have a beautiful neighborhood around there and, and stay in the area. What else can I tell you? Like I said, I'm amenable to color changes, I was leaning towards a black roof, black siding on part of it, and white on the other part, but we're also thinking about dark gray and light gray, we'd certainly take opinions on those things, and, and, you know, we're, we're not set in stone on anything, the house would be dark, dark gray with white trim, so, that's our, our plan as it stands right now. I think that's about it.
We can open it up for questions, go ahead.
You have a lot of toys.
Yeah, well, I've been a firm believer in, one who dies with the most toys wins, you know, I guess, you know.
You answered a lot of my questions, so, so the, the color scheme of, of the pole barn that you're looking for, you intend to match the house?
I don't wanna say it's gonna match the house, it's gonna be different than the house, the house isn't gonna be a two-tone in a sense, there's gonna be a, a lower band of color and an upper band of color, and it won't even necessarily match it in color. I mean, I can, you know, I mean, I can try to, you know, I mean, it's different materials, the pole barn's gonna be, you know, steel siding, steel roof, which, you know, if, if you've seen him around, when, the new one, when they go in, they look, they're attractive, I mean, they look good, you know, and we're gonna take care of it, and, you know, like I said, if any, if anybody is driven by where I live in my house, and where my old house was on Suites Corners Road, right next to Gloria, but it was a pond out front, and I have that brick house up in Suites View Drive, you know, you would know that, you know, I like nice stuff and I, I build nice homes, and, and it's gonna be the same here, we're, you know, we're not gonna put something up that isn't gonna be appreciated by the neighbors and, and whatnot, so, color is not-
I'm not, I'm not gonna suggest colors, that's not-
But I, I don't have a problem with changing the color if it, if it, if it, if it's a make or break deal, hey, look, Paul, we really want a certain color, I, I, you know, you just have to make sure my wife is on board with it, that's all.
I understand.
She's the, the one who decides that half the time from me.
So you, you talked about the, the height of some of your toys, you're actually seeking two variances, correct? One for the height and one for the overall size?
If, if you say it's two variances, I guess it's two variances, you know, I like to think of it as one, but-
So as it relates to the height, it's, it's about eight foot, two, two high-
Yeah.
-for the code?
And, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Is, is there a reason that you can't build it to code?
Yeah, I mean, I, if I build it to code, I can't get certain things in the doors, I, I, I put 14-foot-high doors in, you know, my motorhome's over 12-foot tall, and, and the, the, one boat's 11-foot on the trailer, so that one's okay, but the motorhome isn't, the other boat's nine-foot on the trailer, so, you know, I put some slower doors in there, but I really wanna put the, the motorhome inside too, if anybody knows what it's like, how big those things are, and what it's like to clean them, and, 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 and all that stuff, every time you leave it out for a little bit, you don't use it very often, and it gets filthy, and you just can't keep it clean, and, you know, I like to be able to take it inside and wax it, and, you know, work on it a little bit and maintain it, so, you know, that's the reason why, why I want the height. Now, having said that, I could make the building a little lower, but I'm trying to make it aesthetically pleasing, I mean, again, we, we want that as well, we live there, and-
And do you feel that the, the taller building is more aesthetically pleasing?
It's not necessarily that the taller building is more appealing, I don't think it's gonna take anything away from it, there's other tall buildings in the area, but I think, but what I did was I put a, I put a 512 pitch on it instead of a 412 pitch, which gives me a little more height, and I did that because I think it'll be aesthetically more appealing, so I could lose a little bit of the height by going to a 412 pitch, but I think it's gonna look better with a 512 pitch, a little steeper pitch, so I decided it didn't cost too much more, I said, let's just put a 512 pitch on it and get, get it to look a little nicer, so.
You, you provided a lot of aerial photographs of other buildings in the area that, that you feel are, are similar. Are those, are those the same, are any of those the same steel, new model-type pole barn?
Well, uh, I have to say that the couple horse barns down further are older style, but they're metal, metal, metal buildings. The, uh, one that's just north of us, two homes north of us before, right, right near Atlantic, or close to Atlantic, that one, I, I don't know exactly the outside structure, but I, I believe that's post and beam construction, actually, I talked to a gentleman the other day, he was in here, he lives there, and, and his neighbor, both here, which will both be my neighbors, were both here, and they asked what, what the variance was about, because they came regarding the, uh, separation of the property, and, and the only, they were happy to have that, the only concern was if I ever subdivided the other five acres. One, I can't anyways, they wouldn't let me subdivide if I wanted to, two, I never would, I, I bought it to have five acres, so I could have this building, so I could do what I wanted to do, but you can anyways, those were all subdivided originally as five-acre lots, so, and then the building to the, to the, to the south of me, two places to the south of me is, uh, is, is a newer, couple-year-old steel building with similar-type construction. It's not as big as what I'm proposing, but they actually have two buildings, they have one steel building that's a horse barn, and then they have another steel building, they also have 10 acres, but, you know, again, it's not to exceed the house, size of the house and everything else, so, you know, they may exceed it with the two buildings, they probably do.
And yours is, oh, it's still a little bit smaller than the footprint of your house?
Yeah, slightly smaller than the footprint of the house.
I don't have-
I wanna say the footprint, that's misleading, slightly smaller than the square footage of the house.
Square footage, okay.
House and garage, yeah. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask if anyone else had any-
I had one, just, I'm not an architect or an engineer, but is it possible to lower the height by doing something, I call it a Dutch colonial, or more like standard barn kinda, where you gotta- Yeah, I don't know what it's called, but-
You know, uh-
Instead of having just a-
I, I imagine they could build some kind of truss like that, but realistically, I'm trying to put the narrower part of the building, you know, I'm trying to put the building perpendicular to the road, so now you'd have to come off either end of the building, and your roof would be 86 foot long, and it's just, it, it just doesn't, you know, and I don't wanna put the building 86 foot wide on the property, I think that's not gonna be appropriate for the property, I want it to go deep, so you're, so it's actually a little bit narrower than the house.
So you'd have to widen it to, to put that kinda roof on?
Pardon?
You'd have to widen the, the short-
Well, it would change, it would change the whole layout of the building, the roof would go the opposite, have to virtually go the opposite direction, I, I believe, you, you know, because I have to be, the doors are on, on the side, they're, they're on the long side, so if I put the doors on the end, you know, you know, yeah, could you do that on the end, but now I only got two doors on the end, you got stuff stacked upon stuff upon stuff, and you can't, you can't get anything out unless you hook up to this, pull this out, move that over, and that's what I was trying to avoid.
Yeah, I, I forgot you're going doors on the long end, not the short end.
Yeah, but it was a good thought, you know, I mean-
Thanks.
I have one question, I just, I, I just gotta ask, and, and I, I was told the answer, but, you know, you never know until you actually hear it from the horse's mouth, so to say, why was the rule changed?
The district didn't change it.
We don't make the rules.
I, I get it, but I, I just wanted to know why the rule was changed.
That's fair.
I think the intention was that a lot of the people with smaller properties were kinda suffering, I guess, because they couldn't get as large of a, an accessory building under the old requirements, so they changed- the old requirements, so they changed it to 1% to try to make it better for everybody.
Okay.
It was a simpler rule.
Yeah, and I get that, but I was told a different reason, I'm gonna tell you that, but first I'm gonna say that, yeah, I actually called a couple years ago and said, "Can I build something at my current house?" And I could've just snuck in a couple-door-wide garage. I really wasn't, I didn't wanna do it, but I was like twisting over, I can't find a piece of property, I can't find a piece of property. I really wanna have something more, and I got a three-curved car garage. Can I build something here? Since then, I've acquired more toys, so I wouldn't have enough room anyways. But anyways, I asked about that a couple years ago, and they said, "No, you can't build anything at your property." So I get you with that, and the reason why I knew that part is because when I did come in a few months back, I said, "Hey," you know, not for nothing, "my neighbor just built a building on his property, and I just called like a year and a half, two years ago, and I was told I couldn't build anything." What gives? How come I can't do anything but other people can? And he said, "Well, the rule changed." And I'm like, "Okay, I get it." Having said that, I was told by somebody else, and I'm not here to point fingers or anything, but I was told by somebody else in the town, that the reason why they had gone to this rule also was because people were running businesses out of their buildings, and they were trying to put a stop to that. I'm thinking, "Well, why couldn't somebody run a business out of a smaller building? They certainly could. A lot of people only need a little bit of room. I'm obviously not gonna run a business. I own a business, and I have a big building for that, and we have a retail and all that, and that's not what it's for." But I just thought to myself on that aspect, and this was somebody that's, you know, working in the town, in the building, not building department, but the engineering department, and I thought, "Well, that sounds like a code enforcement thing to me, you know? I mean, if somebody's running a business out there, you guys have the right to stop it if it's not supposed to be run, and why should somebody else not be able to build something they wanted because of code enforcement against other people that are doing the wrong thing?" That's my only point on that, you know? I mean, it just seems to me that, you know, so, it went to the 1% rule, but it's penalizing the people that wanted to buy extra acres, five acres, say, you know, because when, I mean, what if I had 20 acres? It's still the same, it's the same footprint as my house? I can only build a, I mean, what, you know, at what point in time? Basically, you're saying in Penfield, unless you get a variance, you can't build anything larger than the square footage of your house. I mean, you know, if you wanna build a smaller home, but you wanna have a nice shop or a building or something to store your stuff, you're kinda, and that's why you have variance meetings, and that's why you do grant variances. So that's just my way of saying, "Hey, I hope I get this variance, because I think there's a good reason for it and all that."
I suspect maybe one of the reasons is under the old rule, where you could make it as big as you want, they sort of figured that people would be limited just by a number of different things, common sense. Nowadays, I think maybe they were worried about somebody putting a Taj Mahal up, because they had 5.2 acres.
I get that, too. I get that, too. I think when you look at the grand scheme of things with five acres there and 550 feet off the road, with my place, though, what I would propose to build, you know, we're not exactly doing that. We're not taking up huge square footage on the property. The property's, I can't, 200 and some odd thousand square feet or something like that, and I got a building that's 5,000 square foot going on there, you know, and not even, I don't think, right in that vicinity, so...
That's why you have a zoning board of appeals.
Exactly, and that's why I'm here, and so I get all that, you know, I mean, it's not my first rodeo here, or other places. I'm in the swimming pool business. I've attended numerous variance meetings for lots of things, so...
Anyone in the audience care to add to this? Kinda hard to do. You really cover everything. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Betsy Brug, Woods Oviak Gilman, LLP, 700 Crossroads Building, 2 State Street, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Wilbert's Automotive, LLC, request an expansion to a pre-existing non-conforming use under Section 250-7.13 of the Code to allow the construction of a new shipping-receiving and dismantling building, gas punch building, storage building, addition to the existing tire sales and service building, expansion of vehicle storage area, additional parking, extension relocation of perimeter fencing, and other associated site improvements to the existing automotive recycling business located at 1272 Salt Road. Property is owned by Wilbert's Automotive, LLC, and is zoned RA-2, SPL number 095.04-2-2.1, application number 19Z-0020.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. It's nice to be here. This meeting's moving a little quicker than I thought. Sounds good. I'm pleased to be here. What is it? I'm gonna do my best. That was a long legal notice, so I think you covered a lot of material, and I will start by saying that you have, I think, a pretty extensive submission, and hopefully you had a chance to review it, so I'm gonna kinda touch on all the parts, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. For the record, my name is Betsy Brug. I'm here from Woods Oviak Gilman. I'm pleased to be here on this application for the Wilberts in connection with their proposal for expansion of their automotive recycling facility on Salt Road. With me are members of the Wilbert's family in the back. Ron Wilbert, Tim and Kevin are here for any questions. Bob Kiefer and Mike Wall from TY Lynn have been working on this project for quite some time. They're also here, and I would say that we have been working with the town on this. This is our first meeting in front of the zoning board. We are here as part of a process. We don't expect any action from the board tonight. The planning board has seen this, they issued some comments, I think, just last week. They have declared their intent to be lead agency and established themselves as a lead agency, and that secret process is ongoing, and I think they're looking for some feedback from this board. So you've seen the application packet. Wilbert's has been operating at this location on Salt Road since 1952. They are now, I believe, on the third generation of the business. They're a large family, and they have a successful operation. It has grown to other locations. In fact, they have a state-of-the-art facility out in Ontario, and their business is really a sophisticated, really technologically-driven business these days. This property has been here for a long time. They own hundreds of acres of surrounding property, so they don't really have any immediate neighbors other than, I think, one residence, there's a residential area right here in the corner, but other than that, they own most of the surrounding area. The property is zoned rural agricultural. They do operate Christmas tree farms and keep most of their other properties green. Back in 2010, they came in, and the outcome of a subdivision was that they contained the automotive recycling operation specifically to this 17.9 approximately acre section. So this is an aging facility, but they operate a sophisticated business, and it is just becoming outdated. The facilities are aging. This is an opportunity that allows them to master plan for the future sustainability and viability of their business. It allows them to upgrade and modernize their business. At the same time, I think it's also an opportunity for the town, because this is an opportunity for them to address the existing conditions that have really just been there for a long time. There's older buildings, there are some issues with code compliance. They are a legally pre-existing non-conforming use, so their conditions are legal as they currently are, but they are looking at this as an opportunity to upgrade and improve their property, and I think that many of the improvements will really be beneficial to the community and to the town as a whole, and I'm gonna go through those in a bit. From a business standpoint, they're not proposing to expand their operation here. What we're really trying to do is upgrade and make it more efficient, more modern, really allow them to survive at this location. They've been here a long time, they're invested in it, but they'd like to invest in improving the property to allow them to really operate at the high standards that have made them a, really a national leader in their business. So I'm gonna just walk you through a little bit of the site. I'm sure you've all driven by there. Am I okay walking away from the mic? Am I...
Yeah, but you might take that handheld wherever that is.
Oh, here it is. Is this on? Okay, great. So this is the site plan that you have in front of you. There were some photos in your packet. Hopefully you had a chance to look at them. Okay. So this is their main showroom building here. Currently, there's a driveway here. All of this frontage basically is undefined curbing. There is parking in the right-of-way. They currently get all their trucks loading and unloading in Salt Road. They don't have facilities right now for loading and unloading onsite. They have some parking over here, and I think, let's see, I don't think, we don't have the current conditions, do we? Well, let me grab the photos. I'm just gonna pull these out, if you bear with me here. Kinda hard to talk about a building and not look at it, right? Yep, perfect, okay. So, right, so what you have in your packet is a couple views from Salt Road of what's existing. So there's some existing fencing, you see buildings, you see lots of parking perpendicular to Salt Road. So we're gonna address all of that with this new cleaned-up plan. So part of the... I'm gonna organize here. Okay. So the two buildings that are currently here, they're not adjacent to the showroom building. They're aging, they're outdated. From an operational standpoint, their internal operations of how they process and dismantle vehicles is inefficient for them. They have developed much more modern, advanced ways of processing the automobiles and dismantling them, and they'd like to upgrade this facility to do that. So part of that plan is to remove those existing buildings and replace them with one new shipping-receiving and dismantling building. Now, this building will allow them the opportunity to clean up a lot of the frontage, define the curbing, create a way for trucks to come in and unload, load and unload onsite. There's a circulation pattern for larger trucks to go through. It's gonna allow them to contain activities, business activities, inside the building, really all under one roof. In addition to this new building, which I should point out, there's currently a driveway right here, so they would remove that driveway. This is gonna go right up against the existing showroom building, so there will no longer be this driveway here. They're gonna add an addition for the tire area. They currently sell and provide tire sales and service, but they need a space for that now that they're adding here. They're providing an additional storage building here, because they need a well-defined area for storage, and they need it to be located in an efficient location for their purposes in terms of how they process their automobiles. And they're adding this gas punch building here, which, as I understand, I hope I get this right, this is a environmentally sensitive, modern, efficient, technological way of removing fluids from a vehicle. Currently at this site, I believe they're doing it manually, correct, in the building? So currently, employees are manually removing fluids from vehicles. So using this building here will allow them to take the vehicle and remove the fluids in a really appropriate, the safest possible way to do that. So these are important improvements from a business standpoint that they need in order to operate. What this does allow is it does allow an opportunity to clean up a lot of the frontage. So this new building is going to meet code in terms of the setback. Currently, the, all of the buildings actually incur into the code-required setback. So this building is gonna be pushed back. It's gonna allow an opportunity to address the parking along the frontage, allow an opportunity to add green space where there currently isn't any green space. It's gonna allow them an opportunity to relocate parking onsite. So they've added to this parking area here. As you can see, there's some green that's been added along here. The site currently does not provide for any stormwater management, and while they monitor for water quality, this is an opportunity to provide stormwater management in compliance with the current regulations. So we're showing that here, so they'll address water quality, water quantity. Let's see, what else is on the list here? So they currently have an issue with some sitting water that freezes and sometimes poses a safety hazard. They'll be able to address that. I've already talked about the loading, I've talked about the buildings, the curbing. I think that kinda summarizes the improvements. Now, in terms of the application before you, we are, before you for approval of an expansion of a legally pre-existing non-conforming use. I've addressed the legal standards in the submission, but I'm just gonna touch on it. So as you know, the town code prohibits the expansion of pre-existing non-conforming uses, except with the finding of the zoning board, that such enlargement, change, or alteration will permit greater compliance with the provisions of this, meaning the zoning code, or other appropriate regulations, and is installed or instituted to minimize the detrimental effect of the non-conforming use upon adjoining conforming uses. So I think this is actually a great project in terms of both the benefits to the Wilberts, but also the benefits to the community. We did give you a table. TY Lynn put together a nice outline and a table describing each of the improvements in further detail than I've gone through, but I think that you can see that we are bringing the property into greater compliance with the provisions of the town code. We are addressing non-compliant loading, parking setbacks. We're adding and addressing features that today would never be approvable. You know, we're cleaning up and defining the curbing on Salt Road, where currently there's one continuous driveway. We are now gonna have four well-defined driveways. We're gonna address efficiency, safety, aesthetics. I should point out, in addition to the green space, by construction of the new building next to the showroom, these buildings are going to be painted to kind of, to match. So there's gonna be some, you know, significant visual impact in terms of visual improvements to those, to the frontage of the buildings, and in addition to the landscaping. At the same time, we are not gonna have any detrimental effect on any adjoining conforming uses. Again, they own the majority of the property. I don't think we have an aerial. The residence back here is really a good distance from the property. He's well-screened. Bob Kiefer and I happened to be out there, I don't know, several months ago, and met the owner. He happened to be outside and didn't raise any concerns or issues. We told him what was going on. So I think, and this actually allows...
We have an area.
Oh, you got an area, okay. I was gonna show you where the residence is, in case you haven't seen it. So we really don't have any immediate neighbors that would be affected. Again, from the street... I think it's a drawing here.
About the expanded...
That one. Ah, no, that's not it. Existing and the... So TY Lynn has put together this really nice illustration, which shows you, and I think we have small, we have... So we'll submit a copy, so that you have that. So we have the existing conditions as compared to the proposed conditions, and I think you can see very clearly what the improvements are along the frontage. So in terms of Salt Road and the benefits to the community, I think you're gonna have a much safer, more attractive property, and I think that the community as a whole will benefit from that. So we have brought the property more into compliance with code, not just the town code, but the stormwater regulations. I think it's beneficial to the community as a whole. It's important to the Wilberts. They need this in order to continue to operate at this location. They do have a state-of-the-art operation in Ontario, and they really would like to bring this up to the standards that they need in order to operate their business. I think if there's any questions, we'd be happy to...
Can you show us what we're looking at on the blue drawing there? The five doors, is that facing Salt Road?
This, oh, this is the storage building, so that's this building...
The yellow one?
This is the storage.
This elevation is this elevation of the new warehouse building recycling.
No, this is the other one. I think there's another one. Yeah, this one, wherever the site is.
This is the one.
Okay. Yeah, we have the elevations for each of the three new buildings. So we have the elevation for the new dismantling shipping building. We have elevation for the storage building, and then for the gas punch building as well. They're all blue.
This is the view you'd see from Salt Road for this building.
Gotcha.
And this building, as you can see, so these are the man doors that would connect up to the existing showroom, and there's plenty of, oops, lots of overhead doors to, okay, magnets are not my thing. There are overhead doors that really allow the delivery trucks to come inside the building... There are overhead doors that really allow the delivery trucks to come inside the building to unload. So they do get a lot of trucks coming in and out. They do business nationwide. And not only can they load and unload inside the building, but they also are improving the traffic circulation to allow trucks that currently are unloading out on Salt Road, some of the larger trucks that might bring in a number of vehicles, to really come through the site. They can come in through here and exit through here. So they're really addressing a lot of issues with the site from an operational standpoint, from an efficiency standpoint, from a safety standpoint, from aesthetic standpoint, from a code compliance standpoint. So I think they're covering a lot of, a lot of bases here. The important thing is that they have a mature business that has grown and operated here for many years. They'd like to be able to continue to operate here. They need to improve and modernize their facilities in order to be able to do that. It's beneficial to both them and the community. They do own all the surrounding properties, so there's no detrimental impact on any adjacent neighbor. Being successful and being able to survive here actually allows them to operate their Christmas tree farms and to not develop some of the surrounding land that they own.
So you mentioned, by the way, excellent written application. The details in there are very, very well done, and very helpful, at least to me.
I'm glad it was helpful.
You mentioned earlier that your clients don't think that there's going to be, this is going to result in increased volume of business, or that's not the intent, it's just to make current business more efficient.
Correct.
So how would you, how would you measure increased volume? Is it, is it a number of cars serviced? I, I'm just curious about that and...
So they currently have all of these activities going on there currently.
Yeah, right.
But they are just not efficient. They currently have employees draining vehicles.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I saw plastic buckets as opposed to having the technology. They have other locations.
Right.
So their business has grown, not necessarily on this site, but it'll, they have, you know, it allows them to really distribute their, their business among their sites.
So become better by becoming more efficient, not by increasing volume, so to speak. Okay.
Right, although, you know, they do need to just maintain enough flexibility to keep up with the technology that drives their industry.
Sure.
So, I think we were here not long ago because there was a question as to, you know, if this was a permitted use, then you wouldn't, the board wouldn't get into the nitty-gritty of the specifics as much because it would just cover the entire parcel. And I think that's what their original understanding was in terms of the use.
Yeah.
So we're, we're really trying to give you a master plan that contemplates this building, this business being able to survive into the future, to be able to modernize as needed, to incorporate all the features that they currently have at their other facility.
Okay. Do you foresee any increase in the noise level or decrease in the noise level as a result of the...
If anything, the noise level should decrease.
Okay.
That is because they are moving most of their activities inside. And while they're expanding, I think on the site plan, they are expanding their outdoor storage area. Right now, they are just jam-packed in there, and they need the space. They need additional space for outdoor storage. It's not expanding in the direction of any residence, and it does not change any kind of volume of activity or, or noise.
Okay. And after, if this were to be approved and after this is done, would there still be cars parked on the road, or would there be something done to control that?
So the...
Careful Bob to getting up there.
Bob, you want to?
We are relocating a number of the parking spaces. And in fact, the planning board, I believe, had requested that a bunch of them also be relocated, which the plan you got today or yesterday...
Yeah.
Has the most recent parking layout. Bob, you want to? There you go.
Bob Kiefer with TY Lynn. There's a small employee parking space, parking lot at this location. This is being expanded so that the cars that are currently being parked perpendicular along Salt Road will be removed from there and parking here. There'll also be some additional parking spaces immediately adjacent to this new building, and the handicap spaces for the customers that come to the store would be located here. So you won't have perpendicular cars, perpendicular parking anywhere along Salt Road after this is done.
Okay, is there going to be any kind of signage there saying no parking, or any sort of enforcement of that?
Well, with the landscaping and the green spaces, I don't think people are going to park on the lawn.
Okay, all right.
The aesthetics and the noise issue is also going to be improved by the fact that the entire site will be enclosed in a fence system like you would see at the Ontario or the Williamson site. It's a very attractive metal-clad fencing system, and it's a, it's sort of out of sight, out of mind. Noise barriers, they're containing the noise up inside.
Bob, am I correct to assume that other than the big storage building, the showroom building, that's going to have the most visual impact from Salt, right? You won't even really see the other, the other three?
Currently, the, the, one of the, the existing older building comes out and encroaches into the right of way. When that building is torn down, the new building, this building is going to be set back. This is the building that resembles a barn. That's going to be clad in the same vertical siding, blue siding, that is going to enclose the new building. So it's all going to have a, a brand appearance from Salt Road.
So there's already a building, at least where, or a portion of that?
This, this building...
Right.
Exists and is going to remain.
Right.
The, the area where they do the tires is going to be expanded.
What's to the south of that now?
There's a, there's a large, old wooden barn-style building, low ceiling heights, that is used for some disassembly, dismantling, but it's not efficient to be able to put the modern equipment in, and, and the floors are in bad shape, and it's, there's lots of posts and so forth.
That's in their packet.
Yeah, I don't have my...
You have this in your packet. This is the building that's coming down.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? Come on up.
Move this down. Hello.
Hi.
My name is Tiffany Amalfi. I live at 20 Greening Court, Rochester, 14625. I'm here with my father. I actually just came for education as a supporter of a neighbor who actually does have concerns. Word on the neighborhood street is that an automotive graveyard or a junkyard is expanding that all of the neighbors will be able to see from the backyard. And this is only just word of mouth, right? So I wanted to come to actually see what the map looked like, what is actually going on. So I would appreciate, can we see the aerial view, just so we can see where our houses are compared to the new? Thank you. I don't know what I'm looking at. So we live at 1230 Harris Road, so our property butts right up to the Christmas tree plant, which we like very much, by the way.
If there's any way to demonstrate this on the board, the TV folks would really appreciate that, as would we actually, because we're, we need to see it too. Nobody, nobody has a laser pointer? Do we have one of those? No?
This is Salt Road. This is the existing showroom, storeroom area that you would go into if you wanted to buy parts. Okay? This is all the Christmas trees, and this is all Christmas trees on the other side of the road.
So this is Harris Road right here?
Harris would be...
So this is the parlor right here, right, Dad? 1230?
This, the distance from here...
Yeah.
To Harris Road is almost the same as the distance from here to Salt.
Correct. So we have 10 acres right here, so our land comes right up to...
The backside of this.
The backside of the automotive recycling area, I believe is what you refer to it as. So we would be able to see the expansion from our house, is that correct?
The entire perimeter of the parcel that has the recycling in it is going to have a tall fence. So you will not be able to see the, the stuff that is stored within, within it.
Where would the fence be?
The fence is going to follow the property line.
So that's not there right now?
There are portions of it that are fenced, but the, the remainder of it will be fenced.
So we will not be able to see the automotive recycling area from our property?
There's no changes to this site that are going to change what, what, what goes on here, is, is going to continue to go on here. It'll be less visible with a better fence.
Okay. Do you have questions?
Yeah.
I need a clarification. I'm a visual person, I need to see what we're seeing.
She takes after her mother, I have to apologize. My name is Charles Amalfi, I live at 1230 Harris Road, I've been there 17 years. Let's start off, I'm not a thorn in anybody's side. I'm pro-Wilbert, I'm pro-commerce, I'm pro-jobs, I'm pro-town. The only times I've ever been in your beautiful court, I've never gotten a ticket, I come see Margaret Revelle once a year, and she sees me quite well. My only concern is how far off my back property line. I have 10 acres, they have their recycling center, and I'm very familiar with it. I, I'm a construction worker by trade. I poured all the concrete on Lakeside Drive, Lakeside Road for the Wilburts, and I also did the 104 Wilburts. I poured all the concrete. My son owns a, a large car repair, and we buy all our engines and transmissions from Wilburts. Matter of fact, the car I got out here tonight has a Wilbert's motor in it, and I got it right. My only concern is that my 10 acres back up to that actual fence, that there was a nursery behind us that was just recently sold, and there was something done back there with water, electricity, or something last year, because we got a zoning notice, if you will. And I was just curious as to how far over they're going to come if they did take the nursery over, and how far back into the property up to my line they're coming. Because all my eggs are in one basket. And it's, I'm pro-Wilbert, but I don't want to live on top of a scrapyard, and it's not a real good selling point for a house. But I'm not here to deflate anybody's dreams. I'm in it, you know what I'm saying? I just want to make sure I don't get hurt. And I talked to my Realtor, and he just wasn't happy. And again, I don't want to be a pain or nothing, I just want more input. I want to learn how far off the line he's going to be.
Did you hear the explanation that was given? Bob, you want to run it again?
This, this operation is not expanding to the west at all.
It's not?
No. There, there is no change to, in this, what's going on there in this direction.
So you're staying within a footprint of what's already there, and you're just redoing it, and you're not going any farther?
There is going to be, there's going to be an increase in the area where vehicles are stored to the north.
To the north.
And there's going to be reconfiguring of these buildings here, and there's going to be the construction of a stormwater feature, which is really going to be a shallow swale and some small sedimentation ponds. It'll all be green in this area here. So we're nothing closer to whatever's happening over here.
But ours goes this way.
There's, there's nothing closer to what's happening here.
It's mostly on Salt Road.
Yeah.
This, this is the piece of property that is zoned for recycling, and all of it is staying inside there. But because there's going to be modifications to an existing non-conforming business, we have to get a variance from this board.
I understand. I understand completely, and I'm all in for it.
Great.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, like I said, a thorn. And you're going to go north, and how deep back are you going after you go north?
It's going to be the same line.
The same line.
There's, we have an aerial here, I...
I can email this to you. This, I just happen to have a photo on my iPad.
Do you know where you are here? Harris Road is over here.
This is Wilbert's, this is the back line.
And the Wilburts own this.
Too many people touching the...
This is agricultural lands that they lease to a farmer. This is all Christmas trees.
Right, I own this piece right here.
And we're, we're going to be, this piece here, we're, it's not...
So you're going to come over north.
To, to a...
This is my hedgerow.
So this, this area here will have storage of cars in it that doesn't currently have cars in it.
Okay. And you're only going up to that corner, you're not going...
No further that way.
This corner is this corner.
God bless. Thank you.
I'll get you on this so you have it in here.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Anyone else in the audience? Come on up. Hi.
I'm Gail Beluco. I live at 1240 Salt Road. So I'm probably about four houses across the street to the north. So I'm here again to, Wilburts have been great neighbors, as we hope we've been. And our concern too has just been understanding what changes they wanted to make to the property. And all for business growing and, and understand the property's been there a long time, and improvements need to be made. I guess our, my concern is more, it's been explained as it's not going to be an expansion, but you're also putting a lot of funds into a building that's going to be more efficient. So I guess it's more of a question of, will there be ways to monitor if this is an increased activity, or is it staying the same, kind of thing?
That's, that's one of the reasons I asked a question that, that I did about increased Everybody wants to be profitable, and everybody wants to...
Completely understand.
Profits to increase.
Yep.
And there's many ways to do that. Becoming more efficient is one. So are there ways? I, I guess the, the traffic flow, it's good that cars will be getting off the road.
True, that's very true.
So safety will be increased there. Noise levels, perhaps, if they were, you'd see more traffic volume, you'd hear more...
Well, tractor-trailers or kind of thing, that's the concern.
Right, or more noise.
That's the concern.
To me, that would be an indication that, that volume is, is increasing, but again, their stated purpose is...
But then it would be too late.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, you know, and as I'm saying, as the others have said, they've been great neighbors, and we hope the same way we've been as them. It's just, you know, understanding what they're looking to do and...
Right.
And concerned about the increased activity that may happen. But it, you know...
Well, hopefully their past practice will continue, and there just seems to be no reason not to think that it would.
Yeah.
But, but your concerns are well noted and, and quite reasonable.
Okay, thank you. But it does look, the outside would look...
Yeah, it will, yeah. Okay, thanks for your time. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, thank you very much.
Just one closing comment. If, if you haven't had the opportunity to tour one of the modern facilities, either at Lakeside or out at Williamson at the U-Pullitt, and would like to compare and contrast the brand that they've developed at these other sites so that they can bring it to this location, we would encourage you to do that, and I, I believe that Zach is going to extend the opportunity again to arrange a tour, and the Wilburts would love to show you what they're doing.
I pulled the taillight one time in Williams.
It's a wonderful operation.
After an accident to which nobody owned up.
Yeah. I, I, it's an entirely different industry than when I was growing up and building street machines.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know what, I'm, I'm tired. I don't want to take the last application.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And the front row, all might be very patient.
As it moves.
Lance Shearer, 1842 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request a conditional use permit under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.12-F1G of the code to allow the operation of an equipment and small engine repair business at 1842 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is owned by Hidden Hollow Lawn and Garden LLC and is zoned MUD. SBL number 125.01-1-27.11. Application number 19Z-0021.
Good evening, folks. My name is...
My name is Stephen Lance Sheer. I reside at 1842 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, and I also operate a business at the property for the last nine years. This is my 10th year in business. We repair lawnmowers, snow blowers, anything with a gas engine in it, pretty much in the small scope of things. I'd like to continue business there, that's the reason for me being here tonight, to ask for a conditional use permit. My neighbors alongside me are the Ann Harzman Motorcycle Club. I don't think I have any complaints on that side. The other side of me is a church and I have about 2,000 feet of soccer field between me and them. YMCA across the street, and any questions?
So what brought you here tonight to ask for the permit?
Well, originally I was going to put an addition on my building of a pole barn for storage, and that kind of fell to the wayside because I needed to do it two months ago. And I couldn't get a date until today to get the permit for all that.
Right.
And being that I went for that, Andy informed me that I probably should get a conditional use for it because the whole area's changed and is now commercial, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Have you had a sign out front advertising the business?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it's been there a while, right?
About 10 days, I'd say.
Okay, all right. And have you had any issues with traffic being able to come in or get out on that property?
We have an entrance and an exit. We have no problem with egress and ingress.
And do you have any need for significant parking in the...
We have at least 30 spaces of parking available at this point in time.
Was that three zero, 30?
Thirty, yeah.
Yeah, it's, okay. And you said your hours of operation are in your written application, so...
Right, nine to five weekdays, 10 to 2 on Saturday.
Excuse me. God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the board?
No.
Anyone in the audience? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
That was the last hearing, so the hearings will be adjourned, will take about five minutes, and then reconvene in the back of the room. Thank you all very much. So let's reconvene here and we'll go to tonight's applications, and we'll start with number Let's see. I would first make a motion to classify this as an unlisted action pursuant to seeker, and further that we should declare a negative declaration.
Second.
Any further discussion on the seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, in terms of the application, I first would note that the application we have in front of us is for a use variance. That's what was applied for by Ms. Ames, and that's what was advertised, and we have that in front of us. And I am going to make a motion to deny the request, not obviously an easy situation, but frankly, I don't think it's a close issue. You know, read all the standards and read them again and considered the evidence, but to me, two stand out quite clearly. The first is that we don't have sufficient competent financial evidence of a financial hardship other than anecdotal. There's no data, so to speak, hard data. The property's not on the market now, we had testimony of conversations with real estate agents, and I'm sure they occurred. But there's no true test of being able to put the property on the market and sell it. And in that regard, I would note that just over a year ago, it sold for more than asking price, significantly more than asking price. So as we saw earlier from the town code, there is required to be dollars and cents actual proof, and I just don't think we have that. So that's one area where I think we fall short. The second one, I think, is honestly even more compelling, and I think that's the issue of self-creation. We have a situation where there's no condition in a purchase offer to get approval for this first. I know calls were made, I just, you know, saw another website advertising it in a certain way, but you have contracts and you have attorneys and real estate closings for a reason, and it was to make sure that you know, your eyes are wide open when you go into a real estate purchase and you know you are going to be able, from a zoning standpoint, to use the property without further need for variance or other permissions as you intend. And that, absent that, it's, I don't think it's possible to consider this anything other than self-created, the hardship to the extent it exists. And I guess I'm certainly willing to talk about that, and I, you know, there are other factors too, but I kind of stop there because it's obvious to me.
Those are the two major points, but I mean, to the layperson, it may be hard to comprehend initially, but having a bunch of disabled youngsters living in a communal situation is legally different from having unrelated, you know, tenants living in a communal situation, even though it may be similar. From a legal point of view, it's not.
Right.
One is clearly within the zoning ordinance, the other...
Well, by statute, by state statute, the town has no choice but to insert it within the definition.
And this was a really hard situation, but I do feel that, you know, if attorneys were involved, they should have done their due diligence too. This is why you do things like...
And who knows what happened, but it's, it wasn't a condition, I guess, said another way, we shouldn't have been here before the deal closed, we should have had this hearing before the deal closed. So I don't know if anybody wants to comment on any of the other conditions?
So I'm going to second your motion to...
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to deny and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Superfly is not here.
Heritage Christian's here.
Heritage Christian, that's number three.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that this is a type 2 action pursuant to seeker, not having any adverse impacts on the environment and requiring no further action.
I will second that.
Great.
All those in favor of that?
Sorry.
That's okay. So a motion to declare type 2 and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'm going to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for the Heritage Christian. I do feel that this is in harmony with the environment. I don't see any issues in terms of parking, interior, exterior, issues, anything like that, no noise created. It's not going to be used for commercial use, it'll be used for educational purposes. And again, I don't see any detriment to the area, so with that, I would say to approve it.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Keybank was here.
First, I'll make a motion pursuant to seeker to declare this a type 2 action, which is not subject to further review.
A second. All right, so for seeker, we have a motion to declare this a type 2 action and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I further make a motion to approve this area variance. It's pretty clear that there's a lot of buildings within the area that are very, very similar, if not bigger, than what they're looking to put up. The variance as far as the lot size is a pretty significant variance, it's about, almost double what the code calls for. But again, it's not significant as it relates to other pole barns within that area. I'm not sure that there's a feasible means for the applicant to do what they want to do in another way. I think he did a good job of explaining what he wants to do and how he wants to do it. So I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I would only add that I think there are probably other ways, but not many would make the property look as nice as it's going to look, in a manner that we, which he's choosing, they're choosing to do it is good, so. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, did we get a second?
Not yet.
I'll second it. For both area variances, by the way. Any further discussion? You don't want to add anything, do you?
Only that it appears I shall remain married.
We haven't voted yet.
No, I know. I wouldn't assume anything.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
From the backyard, I approve also.
Oh, there you go. Great. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My wife says I groan down and on.
You're just very enthusiastic, nothing wrong with you. Okay. Do you want us to do keybank? I'm sorry, I thought he was here.
I'm not representing keybank.
Okay, all right.
I was just here as a casual observer.
Then let's go to, let's go to seven. We're not going to take any seeker action because it's coordinated review, so just a motion to table?
Yeah, and if there's any comments or feedback that you want to provide back to the planning board?
Oh, okay, well, I guess I'd make a motion that we provide feedback that this is a good application, it's going to brighten up the area, it's going to make the operation more safe and more efficient, and I for one would be in favor of the request.
There's more compelling arguments that it increases compliance with the code in these types of situations.
Absolutely. Now, that was a great application, and it listed everything well. So that's, I guess I'd make a motion to convey that thought in writing, memo?
I'll create a memo.
Yeah, let's just see it before it goes.
Is there a specific reason this can't be voted on?
Yes.
Seeker.
There is, oh, because of seeker? Oh, sorry, okay, thank you.
All right, so that's my motion to table for that reason.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go back to, let's see where we are. See you, Betsy.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to, this is a type 2 action pursuant to seeker, and having no adverse impacts, requiring no further action.
My second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for Superfly DMC. First of all, I think that's going to be a great addition, that's been a vacant building for a while, I think it's going to be great there, definitely in harmony with the rest of the plaza. And because it's in a plaza, I don't see any impacts in the negativity with parking or anything like that, and just a great addition, so I don't even have any conditions on this, just approve.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did they say when they're going to, what they're targeting opening?
I didn't see that, but the signs are up. There's already a Facebook page.
I love those, that makes it official.
Perfect. Okay, keybank.
For seeker purposes, I'm going to make a motion that this is an unlisted action, and also that we should issue a negative declaration, no further, no environmental, adverse environmental impacts.
Okay, I'll second that. Further discussion on the seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
With regard to the motion, I'm going to move to approve three signs, I'll let them move them up where they want to move them. I don't think there was any real showing that it needs, they need more than that to adequately identify the business, so I'd say they can pick which three they want out of the five, probably the three on top, I would imagine. But beyond that, I don't think there's a showing of a need for more, other than there's other places that have multiple signs, of which they have multiple signs, so...
And it's been there for a while, it's been an established business there.
Yeah, my only concern with this kind of stuff, and we talked a little bit about it, is safety. Most of the people that go through those doors are probably return customers, but not all. So, oh, I need to find a keybank to make a withdrawal, to make a deposit, and it is kind of in a, like McDonald's, so three signs is fair, and I think enough as well. So, having them pick them, is it, are we comfortable with that? It's, I don't know how else to do it, but I'm fine.
You know, I'll let them decide what they, you know, what they need as far as identification on the building.
Okay.
Why should we make that determination?
Yeah, okay, that's fine, fine by me. If they were here, we would certainly ask them. All right, so we have a motion to, I guess, approve in part up to a total of three building mounted signs. And do we get a second?
Second.
Marie seconds it, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pediatric clinic?
Yep. I'm going to move that this is a type 2 action pursuant to seeker, no further action required, not subject to further review.
Second. So on seeker, we have a motion to declare type 2 by Mike, I have seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
As far as the motion itself, I'm going to move to Grant. He proposed use. I think it's going to be less intense in the bank, pretty much no change externally to the structure. The hours are going to be a little bit longer, but nothing, that neighborhood can't handle it, it's a relatively commercial area. No major problems with scope or anything else, ingress and egress, I've been there for years, site distance isn't a problem, we're not going to make any changes to the exterior.
All right, motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I think, jumping down to number eight. I'm going to make a motion, a seeker motion to declare this a type 2 action.
Second.
Mike seconds it, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'm going to make a motion to approve. He's been there almost 10 years, I guess, and I thought he had a sign out there for even longer, but, you know, maybe it's a sign that he moves in and out, I don't know. But as far as we know, no issues with his operation there. Things have changed a little bit zoning-wise, so it was good advice to tell him to come in and get this. I think he said nine to five, Monday through Friday, whatever hours he put in his application were fine with me, so my motion would be for approval for the hours listed in the application.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Sorry.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
You give me time.
So that is the last application, so if there's no other business, we'll stand in recess. Thank you very much.